What time is your computer system?
My computer says six in the morning.
Okay, actually.
No, not today.
Okay, great. Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome you to this evening's City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item this evening is Englewood Arts Hampton Hall update. Eric Bertoluzzi from Englewood Arts is present to provide an update on the Hampton Hall lease to City Council. Good evening.
Mr. Bertoluzzi.
Good evening. I love your shirt.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
That's the assistant.
I knew I could never look as good as the city manager if I dressed up.
That's why he's sitting over there because he needs us today.
Okay, so I'm Eric Bertoluzzi. I'm one of the founders, hello, of Englewood Arts, and I'm the current Executive Director. Another one of the founders is seated to my right. This is Jim Copenhagen. And Jim, he's led many lives. He was, when he retired from Honeywell, he was one of the top executives. And he went from the frying pan into the fire, became the executive, first Executive Director of the Colorado Symphony, right after the reorganization of, from the Denver Symphony days. And Jim has been a supervisor, a mentor, and a friend to me for like 28 years. And so when I asked him to help with Englewood Arts, he said, "Just tell me when and I'll be there." So I want to thank all of you for inviting us here tonight. We're looking forward to sharing some information with you. Thank you, Eric, for extending the invitation. And we only have a few minutes. I'll try to get through as much information as possible. Before I go further, I would like to, she's not here, but I'd like to sing the praises of Cynthia Madden-Leitner because, if you don't know, our office is in the museum. And that office was there for us before we became incorporated as Englewood Arts. Actually, was offered the office by Cynthia because of the relationship she and I had with Up Close &amp; Musical, which is an organization that I started 30 years ago. So she's provided a home and a safe haven for Englewood Arts and Up Close &amp; Musical over the past 18 years. She's never requested anything in return. I think she appreciates the fact that Englewood Arts and Up Close &amp; Musical contribute significantly to the artistic enrichment of the community. That's why we're here. Just a word about Up Close &amp; Musical. We are finishing our 30th year. Up Close &amp; Musical collaborated many times on these multimedia productions during the summer out at the Piazza. Those were a lot of fun. But then the rains started to come in August, and they were very expensive productions, as you could imagine, and a lot of money went down the drain doing them. So we don't do them anymore. But Up Close &amp; Musical now partners, I shouldn't use the word partner, collaborates with Up Close &amp; Musical and Englewood Arts. We do a number of projects together. We're very closely related, and it's possible that in the near future, we'll be even closer. And a word about our sponsors. We, as any other nonprofit organization, we depend on the generosity of various sources of funding: foundations, corporations, individuals, and some earned income. Some of our major sponsors are, of course, the SCFD, the Exile Energy Foundation, Colorado Creative Industries, the Shram Foundation, and among others, the Bowen Fund for the Performing Arts. If you don't mind, I'd like to take just a few minutes and share with you some of the programs that we currently do. This is Englewood Arts. I borrowed this from the museum, by the way. It's on its last legs. Okay, here we go. So we were incorporated back in the year 2000. Actually started, Englewood Arts started when I was the Chair of the Cultural Arts Commission. And we wanted, our goal was to build an art center, and we worked on that diligently for 10 years, and it didn't get any traction. So, but the city of Englewood helped us with the incorporation papers and also we were an outgrowth of the Cultural Arts Commission. The first program that we started, Strings Attached, was a violin program in the schools in Englewood. It was before school and after school. We, at one time, had 125 kids in that program, just group classes. Now with all of the other competitive things going on, we have maybe 40 kids, and we changed this from group classes to private lessons. So the kids play the violin, the cello, the guitar, and the piano, and they have their choice of a 20-minute or 30-minute lesson every week. Now down the street, we have a violin program. Well, this is after school. This is also after school, one day a week. I think there are eight kids in this program. We buy the instruments for all of these youngsters. This is a tuition-based program. The kids don't pay anything for this. We also have programs in Sheridan, Fort Logan-Northgate. We started a program, thanks to the federal funding, several years ago, I think seven years ago, in the elementary school. When the federal funds ran out, the middle school picked up the program before it became Northgate. They built that new, nice new building over there. There are three classes that take, that happen every day of the week during school hours. It's a graded class. There are 10 kids in each class, a beginning class, an intermediate, and a class that's called a performing class, and that, those kids go out and play in the community. That's been going on for six years. The District of Sheridan pays us $16,000 every year, helps cover the costs of that. We have one teacher who's working there every single day. We also have a teacher once a week who works with the kids. There are 21 kids in the, it's actually a new program, String Orchestra at Sheridan. So we, the teacher who teaches the Bishop kids goes over once a week, very early, 7:30 in the morning, works with the kids in the orchestra there. This is a new shining light for us, Mr. David's Music Class. It happens at Maddox, Early Childhood Learning Center. And every one of those youngsters, 225 of them, meet with David several times per month, and he does fun stuff with them where they learn to sing, and they, it's a very music-oriented experience for the kids. And they learn about teamwork, they learn vocabulary, they learn to count. It's quite an amazing experience. The Director of our Strings Attached program, David Paul, created this program when he lived in Florida. He did it for 15 years. And we actually found some funding for it. The school, the school doesn't give us a cent for it. So we have a person in town here who is very interested in early childhood education, and she went over one day, saw the program, and she writes us a check. New to us this year is the Clayton Theater Productions. I don't know if any of you have ever seen what Michelle Grimes does over there, but for 15 years, through her own initiative solely, she's been working with 25 kids with her production that she writes and directs every year. Well, the Exile Energy Foundation wanted to give us some more money this year. They increased their grant, but they said, "Give us, tell us what you're going to do that's new." So we decided to work with Michelle Grimes over there, and we provided musicians and a composer to write original music for the play, the Art of Changing Mei Mei, was a wonderful experience. Okay, those are basically our education programs. We do a series of chamber music concerts in Hampton Hall. We started doing them in here, maybe in the year 2000, and I played in a few of them. I can remember, we had maybe six people in the audience for some of them, maybe because I was playing. But anyway, then we graduated to the atrium, did a number of concerts there. The acoustics in the atrium are just sensational. Then all of a sudden, Hampton Hall appeared. We moved our concerts in there. We do, we do nine concerts every year, starting in November, I mean September, one concert per month, and those concerts are very well attended. They're close to sold out almost every time. We also do a series of concerts we call On Stage in Hampton Hall.
You might mention how the Hampton Hall was funded.
How the hall was funded. Right, so we raised $83,000 to help build that hall. Did you know that?
Yes.
You did? All right.
I think I was there at the time.
You were on council, right. I remember that night, Lorette. I remember that night. So the Shram Foundation gave us $50,000 to help build that hall. And I don't know what the total cost was, but I think...
About twice that.
Yeah, the Public Works Department never told us. We just handed over the money.
I think they knew how much it was.
It's a nice place. We do this, this is a, we open the hall to musicians who need a place to perform, and sometimes we sponsor the programs. These are non-classical concerts, whereas, of course, chamber music, they're all classical That's just Englewood Arts in a nutshell. I think that I sent out a master schedule of what we've done. I don't know if any of you had a chance to review that, but...
Can I ask a question? Is there something different in the ones that are bold?
The blue, the ones in blue, highlighted in blue, are those, are Englewood Arts events. The ones in black are...
Okay, so they just came across as black and white here, so they're just highlighted? They just look like they're bold?
Okay, the ones in bold are rentals.
Okay.
And we've had quite a few of those. The hall is becoming popular. It has its limitations, but it's becoming a valuable destination for a lot of individuals and organizations. You probably have reviewed those, but I, just to give you an idea of the variety and diversity of events that go on, and they're just from the people renting it and organizations. One of the first events was a World Fitness Association competition. Those were a bunch of bodybuilders, and we had a lot of fun over there. Operation Fetch was a service dog graduation, that the dogs were trained. That happened, I think, last summer. The Bangladesh Association of Colorado had a music, dance, and poetry ceremony. Lots of fun. Last spring, marijuana growers had a day-long event over there on education, on how to grow marijuana. Sunrun, which is a solar, one of the bigger solar energy companies in the country, showed the famous film After the Flood, and they were actually promoting the use of solar energy in residential buildings. One of more, one of the more fun events for me, there was a birthday party for the grandson of the Emperor of Vietnam, his 90th birthday over there. That was a big event. On March 3rd, my daughter got married in Hampton Hall.
Congratulations.
I sent her a bill. I don't know. I know I'm talking too much, so I'm gonna let Jim talk, but an important event, the Wings Foundation, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's a foundation that helps adults survivors of childhood sexual abuse. This was a foundation new to me, but the room was full. There were 200 people over there, and seven or eight, seven or eight people spoke out about, they gave their testimonies, and it's a very important organization that helps people. One other thing I'd just like to say about Hampton Hall, it's a wonderful destination, and it's, we're hoping that it will be used more and more by the community, but it's like a beacon here in Englewood. Thousands of people come to Hampton Hall who would not ordinarily ever set foot in Englewood, and that's mostly our, our chamber music concerts. Most of those people aren't from Englewood who attend those. We've had about 7,000 people renting, participating in rental events over there, and that has pleased me greatly and Englewood Arts. So Jim, if you'd like to say anything about it?
Well, just let me add to Eric's comments. As you can tell from the list of things we do, we began as music education. That was why we thought that it would be really wonderful if there was an art center in Englewood, but we weren't able to bring all the pieces of that together. But we're all very convinced that educating young children not only gives them the experience of the music, but there's all kinds of data that shows that music experience turns young people into young, collect, collect, careful adults. And so it's more than just an opportunity for them to hear music or to participate in playing music. It adds a level of discipline. That's the thing we always see with our young kids in particular. They learn self-discipline, they learn self-experience, so they turn into nice young people there. The other aspect, as Aaron, as Eric said, is we always felt that we could add to the value of the community, bring people into the community as well as provide something for the residents of the community, something they could be proud of, and we're pleased that. The range of things that we do, which we didn't start out to think about, has grown substantially. And as a nonprofit, that's always a challenge, to find the resources that you need to do the programs. We want to make it available and cost-effective for people who want their children to learn music, for people to come to the concert series in Engle, in Hampton Hall, increasingly now a place. And I know from the work I do with nonprofits in the Denver area, venue space is a big problem for many, many arts organizations. They don't have a place to perform. They're in the business of performing, and they rehearse and work hard for it, and they need a place to show what they can do. And there hasn't been one. Hampton Hall provides a wonderful spot for them, and it has the value of a place you can park your car easily, and now, of course, light rail is another advantage for that. So we're very pleased with the support we've received from Englewood. We think it's a two-way street. We think we're providing value for that support, but we thank you very much for the continued support that you've provided over the years.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Bertoluzzi and Mr. Copenhagen? Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say thanks for coming and presenting to us, and it's really helpful to hear a recap of all of the programs that you do, so I really appreciate that. And it was interesting, I didn't know that you were born from, you know, efforts from the Cultural Arts Commission. That's, that's a pretty neat fact. And thank you just for the service that you provide to our community and the value that you bring. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I want to thank you both too for the work that you've done, and particularly for you, Jim, and the things that you've done in the metro area to continue to make sure that arts are preserved and education is central to it. So thank you for both of you doing that. And I really, I'm thankful that you've been able to get as many events still going as you have. In terms of, in terms of numbers, do you feel like it's about the same as last year? Is there anything we can be doing to be more helpful in promoting? Are the efforts working the way you want? Is there more in the partnership that would be useful other than money?
Thank you so much for asking that question. I thought there, Hampton Hall could be improved a little bit. It needs upgrades with the lighting, the theater lighting, and actually, the speakers are great, but the soundboard needs to be upgraded. It's pretty antiquated, and a lot of, the room could be used more if the renters didn't have to rent their own equipment and bring it in. So I'd like to, I'm hoping that we might be able to work together to see some of those upgrades happen. They're not, wouldn't be tremendously expensive, but I've sought the advice of some experts, and I'm hoping that we can keep improving the hall so that it remains attractive for the community.
Do you think there would be grants we could go after for the equipment and then have it rented out so it pays for it over time and then?
That's possible, but who would own it, you know? Who would own the equipment?
Well, I think that's a detail we could work out. It's whether or not there'd be something available to make it work. But maybe some people don't want to rent if they have better equipment either.
Right. I also want to say that I get a lot of, we receive a lot of cooperation from the building staff, Martin Hernandez and Max Rangel, and even the people who empty the trash from time to time. You know, if a light bulb goes out, or I need the doors to be unlocked at a certain time, Max and Martin are always there within minutes to respond in a positive way. I really enjoy the relationship that we have with the building staff. Never, I've never encountered any resistance, and I appreciate that.
Great, that's great to hear. Thanks. So maybe one take would be to figure out if there's some grant opportunities for some of the things that you've mentioned, whether it's soundboard or, or some of the electronic, or the technical stuff, but thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, John Lynn, for that fine presentation. In terms of some of the potential upgrades, does Hampton Hall have a piano or more than one piano?
We own a piano. It was donated to us back in November.
And is it?
Yes, it was a gift from a family, a nice lady who had played the piano for many years. It's Steinway. And it was actually made in 1885. But when it was donated to us, we had it, we had it refurbished, has all brand-new Steinway parts in it, and it plays great. It's not a nine footer, it's a Steinway B, which is about a seven footer. And it, for most of our purposes, it will be satisfactory. But when we have nationally-known artists, last month, we had Anne Shine come in here. She's known all over the world. She performed on the nine footer. Next year, we have Christopher O'Reilly coming in. He's also a very well-known national pianist. He'll play on the nine footer. So we do have a piano. And it was used last night in a voice recital from a student, a student voice studio. Say that right. A bunch of students from a voice studio, and they, they used the piano. So it's helpful. There was a piano recital on Saturday night, and then the voice recital on Sunday. It's nice to have it there, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Gozendorfer in the future would be lovely also. Something else, even for two piano pieces, it could expand some of your reach. I have maybe more than one, but we're glad you have one. Can you tell us two things about having begun from the Cultural Arts Commission? Can you tell us and citizens or constituents listening what your relationship with the Cultural Arts Commission today looks like, or what you would hope it could look like? Because I see additional opportunities to continue collaboration, knowing, one, that one of their initiatives at present is to align spaces for artistic performance with the artists in the metro area, so some of what you're already doing, I know they're working on.
Yeah, quite honestly, we don't have much contact with the Arts Commission. And I know that Tim attends the meetings from the museum, and from time to time, he'll share some information with us, but I guess we need to build a relationship, don't we?
Yeah, I think it could be a really positive, ongoing relationship for the two entities. You know, Member Martinez is the official liaison between council and the Cultural Arts Commission now, so she would be your point person. And then I'm curious about the annual revenue you, you take in from, from the rentals of the room, the hall. Approximate, if I can.
Last, let's see, 2017, it was a modest sum, $7,000 to $10,000. 2018, a little, I think we're projecting maybe double that.
Yeah, it looks like a lot from this list you provided.
We have a fee, a standard fee, but it's negotiable.
Okay, good.
A lot of nonprofits, like there are children's theaters that use the place, and they can't really afford to pay top dollar for it. So we, we want the room to be used, but yet the stream of revenue is necessary for us because it helps support all of this that's going on here. You know, we, we own all of the violins and cellos that are used in Sheridan, and those violins over here. That's not inexpensive, you know. We didn't want to be in the instrument-owning business, but sometimes if you don't provide the instruments, the kids don't play. So it's either that or nothing, so.
Well, thank you. I'm glad the two of you are here and supporting the effort. I'm really excited about all of this.
You're welcome, Cheryl. Is that it?
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Appreciate you being here. I'm glad that Hampton Hall is getting used. I think the contract with you guys was a good idea. You seem to be getting pretty good at booking these. It looks like the, the amount is equal, since it's on both pages, that you did about the same each year, give or take a little, a little bit down for 2018, it looks, but I don't know if that's just using more days.
We're halfway through the year.
Huh?
We're only five months through the year.
Oh, so this is just, oh, so you keep, you're gonna keep booking, right?
Right, yeah.
And if that's the case, I mean, I didn't know whether this was a complete list or not, but if that's not the, that's not the case, you're doing pretty good, so you're gonna fill in some spots. I really would like to see the contract come back. I know that you were concerned about what we were gonna do with this building and what would happen with the contract that you guys did with us, and a lot of the intent of that contract was to make sure that we had somebody who was booking the room, who was actively making sure that it was used, and you have done an excellent job of upping that and keeping your, your end of that bargain. But I would like to see that come back to council one... But I would like to see that come back to council, one, to understand the revenue piece of it, because I believe, if memory serves, that that contract was intended not to be necessarily money-making for us, but the use of that room and that somebody else would be managing those affairs. So, I think this, especially since we have new people on council, Ms. Quest isn't here this evening, but I think it would be important for people to understand why we did it and what your purpose is and what the contract is about. And then I would like to see a list come forward of exactly what you think the improvements need to be, what your concerns are, whether that is something structurally with the room or whether it's material, equipment. And then let's see where we go from there. But I would at least like to see what you're looking at that you think you need. And the third thing I would ask, that you bring that time if we could, is all of the programs that you're doing and the count of what you've brought into the community, both for Sheridan and Inglewood here, in creating the education piece and the accessibility to the music programs. I think that in our partnership, that we need to make sure that we're understanding the benefit that we're getting from that financially and program-wise. And that we can capture some of that, that we're contributing to this and see where we want to go with what you need. But I'd like to see a little bit more formalized paper when you bring the contracts so that we understand everything that you're doing in this community and the other grants you're getting, how you're, you know, how you're leveraging your finances. Because it sounds like you've gotten some donors and financed it. It's come a long way since I was on council the first time and you were still doing, you just had really strings attached, was in the baby stages of having just gone, you know, into the schools and that. Not that it didn't make a big impact, but it's been a lot over the last 18 years. So, if you wouldn't mind bringing some of that so that we could have a real discussion about whether it's viable or not to move forward with some equipment and where we're at. Because if the city can partner with you and we can take some ownership of how we're contributing to this, I think that would be an important statement for the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know that Hampton Hall had some iffy starts in there, but after all of that got going, and I know that we partnered on the maintenance, and I appreciate you making some kind comments about the people that do the work to go ahead and keep that up because we do contribute to all of those events and that by, you know, we are still partnering with Hampton Hall in that contract. But you are really, you more than upped your game in making sure that that's being used, and I greatly appreciate it. It doesn't do anybody any good if it sits there empty.
Am I wrong in, do you have copies of the agreement? You do, don't you? Does everybody on the council have a copy of the agreement?
I think if we could kind of get that all together at the same time and come to some understanding about where we were, why we did it, and where we're at today, and where we would like to go, I think that's a conversation worth having.
Okay. So, this was just a nutshell today?
It's a lot of nuts. That's a pretty big nut.
Well, we were given 20 minutes and I think it's been 33 so far. And we'll be happy to come back anytime and provide the information that you're requesting.
I would greatly appreciate it.
And, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, is it brief or?
Yes, I actually, I wanted to say that I think this is a good council request, and that's where I think we can get help from the city manager on it too. Do you have an annual report that you do for finances at year-end? Is it, it looks like it's January to December? Or some kind of a financial sheet? I think that's really what Councilmember Berentine might be asking for too.
We could provide one.
Yeah, some general, and then the numbers. I do think that we can help you with that though. So, I think if council, if our assistant city manager can help make it a council request. I think you probably have the data already. Thanks for the update there, I really appreciate it.
I would like one clarification, and that is that my interest in you providing any financial information is not for the city in any way, shape, or form to leverage any money out of this organization.
Hey, try!
I'm serious. That's not what I'm looking for because I understand exactly why we did that contract from you, and it was not for us to make money on that. It was for us to go ahead and make sure that we were providing these services and using a facility that was sorely underused. So, I just want to ease your mind as we're going into a budget cycle that that is not why I'm.
We're not making any differences.
Thank you. I would love to thank you for coming. I greatly appreciate this presentation, and it helps me understand better where you've come from and where you've been. And I took music lessons when I was in elementary school and took me all the way through college. And I appreciate the impact that you're having on the community. And so, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for coming this evening to share, and we look forward to getting some more information from you.
Thank you too. A few nice words go a long way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank him too. He's always very responsive. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
All right. Thank you for coming. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, Accessory Dwelling Unit Town Hall Meeting. Council will work together on establishing the framework for the accessory dwelling unit town hall meeting on May 24th. And so, I actually would just like some discussion. I will share one thing that I have heard from people, and part of the reason that I was in favor of the town hall meeting is constituents wanted a town hall meeting where council could, where they could address council with their concerns, they could ask questions and, one at a time with everybody in the room, hearing the same questions, which would perhaps eliminate duplicate questions because, so anyway, that is kind of what I foresee. And I mean, I have some other thoughts, but I just want to open it to discussion for ideas and how we might move forward with this. Councilmember Olson.
I agree that what citizens are telling me they want is less of a breaking out into lots of groups where they're seeing things at different places, but rather a coordinated effort to hear a number of, both the pros and the cons, and how they could be mitigated if we went forward. So, that requires help from our staff. I don't think any of us, at least I do not want to be the one speaking on behalf of any of the new policies that we're considering. And so, I don't know what the preparation is from our staff folks that are experts in this to be able to help us that night.
Well, I, I can be promptative, my answer, thank you. Is, and Brad Powers coming up and he'll have, I'm sure, some thoughts on this. In your packet, I think the most important thing is the four different options that were presented to this council previously in terms of regulating ADUs. I think where we want it, we're hesitating maybe, is that we didn't want to have this be a staff presentation and then staff fielding questions on what we may or may not do, that our impression of this was that we kind of held these two larger informational sessions, educated the public on what some of the options were out there, what were ADUs, all that kind of stuff. And then this session was more focused on, hey, the council's considering final, a final decision on this at some point. We want to hear from the public, have questions asked and answered. We'd certainly be there if there were more technical questions. But past that, I think we'd need some specific guidance as to what you'd want us to, maybe how to frame the evening. But I think where we were struggling is figuring out exactly, you know, what scope of that presentation were you looking for.
I thought at the very least, if we could have a visual of option one, option two, option three, and there are a simple, which is no simple thing to do, explanation of each of those. And I mean, I think we have some of that already in our notes, but there's more behind this of how we came to those and what the pros and cons of each would be. I don't know if we want to use stickies or not for people to put questions on things and give them a chance, but I was trying to think about our forum that we did, the two of them, and getting input on our strategic planning and trying to figure out, but it just doesn't, this is more, we have, we do have specific things we want them to respond to. It's not like, what do you think our strategic plan should be?
Actually, I would like to respond to that a little bit. I think that's a great idea to have those breakouts. But if public has questions, then if staff would be prepared to answer those questions about what the options are, I, some of this just, and I do believe that this is an important piece of it, for this constituents to understand if there's questions. But I don't think it's also a time for us as a council to listen to what they're saying. I'm just going to give a couple of.
Can I ask a question? So, did you hear me say breakouts? Because I wasn't talking about breakouts. I was talking about three different options being presented all in one. Okay, good. Just want to make sure.
No, I didn't.
I'm not in favor of the breakout kind of thing too much either anymore.
I absolutely am not. Just a suggestion before I, you know, give that back to you, I think that's a good idea. I thought it might be a great idea to have a large zoning map and perhaps little dots so that when people come in, they could put a dot on the zoning map where they live. And I mean, maybe, maybe we don't need that. I also thought about sticky notes and, and one of the questions that I have is how we capture thoughts. I think Assistant City Manager was really good at capturing the thoughts of the public when we had discussion before. So, I've heard from some people that they want council to take notes, but I'm open for input. Councilmember Berentine.
I was going to comment on what Councilmember Olson said as well, and you agreed to was that, heard pretty resoundingly, that no more breakout sessions. What they want is for the whole group to hear and everybody's question and the staff answer or responses back and forth all at one time. So, they don't want that anymore. Okay. So, I guess we're agreed on that. And I would like to see the planning and zoning recommendations as it was presented available. What their, what their original guidelines were, because I don't think we've gotten rid of that necessarily in doing these one, two, and three things. So, and that was the catalyst for the issue coming forward in the first place. So, I'd like to kind of go back and make sure that people understand the foundation of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. So, given we've had a couple of events that involved, included the, our citizens, our constituents beyond council previously, having yet another event, I think perhaps it'd be good to open the event with a summary or a recap of what we've gone over before or what the facts are, some of the important details to keep in mind. It also provides those details for people who didn't participate in anything to date. So, this is their first, what do we know about the plus and, you know, pros and cons of having ADUs in our city. Information about neighboring cities, just the baseline data. And then, and then I think it would be intelligent to simply decide what are our objectives? What do we want to have accomplished when we finish this session with our constituents? So, when we know what we want, those are objectives, name them, list them, and then work backward and figure out how we accomplish that, right? Isn't that a straightforward way to get there?
That's the way I think. I don't know what our goals are.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
I concur, and I was going to say the same, that we should recap for folks that this will be their first session with us. And with the visuals, also include the zoning map with the current ADUs. Because we do have those, and so I think it'll be important visual, again, to show the folks where they already are. And I think that's a good point about what exactly are we trying to achieve, other than more feedback? Maybe more specifics on the particular options? If they had to choose one, maybe?
A little bit more of a directive approach. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And my, I'm not totally against that, but if we are trying to direct the way the public wants to go, they will feel like we are not listening to what they want.
Not directive in those terms. Thanks for that comment. But directive in terms of just.
Structure of the meeting.
Exactly. Instead of open-ended here, similar to what Member Olson and, yeah, Martinez.
What's our goal for the evening? Let's decide that right now. What is our goal that night?
Okay, so, I think that's a great question. So, shall we go around?
I've been like all over my head on what it should be, so I'm really open.
What my goal is, is to hear what the public wants about ADUs. Because that is my feeling that we, part of the reason we haven't made a decision yet is because we wanted more feedback from what the public wants. That is my number-one goal. Councilmember Berentine.
I think the goal is not ours. This meeting wasn't requested by us. This meeting was requested by the citizens. I mean, they were frustrated. They felt somewhat disjointed and disconnected from the information that was being provided. And they requested this. The citizens did, not necessarily council. So, I think the goal is to go ahead and let the citizens have the meeting and information in the way that they have requested and see where, see where that takes us, because I think they were pretty frustrated.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
So, if we have direct communication from constituents stating a frustration, then let's simply use that data. Let's revisit the communications we have requesting this meeting from the citizens, and do we have that such that we can put together some list of, or at least look at that? I haven't, I don't recall seeing a full or write-up. And I would also like to know what Mr. Power feels about this question we're discussing, frankly.
Okay. So, Brad?
Well, I don't want to interrupt the discussion.
I would like to know, what are your views just to this moment?
Well, I think our sense of what this meeting was about was a little bit about what the mayor said, which was, at this point, we've had two very interactive workshops in this room with upwards of a couple hundred people from the community that were very structured and intended to be that way so people could educate themselves and have that discussion about, this is where I live, these are the options, this is how I feel about it, and this is my response to your asking me about these three or four options. So, we have data from a couple hundred people around that.
Yep.
So, I think one of the things that we were envisioning in this, and it's up to you to give us direction, believe me, we will take that, which was what we heard in terms of the impetus for this town hall meeting was the missing part was the ability for the staff to step back for a little bit and have a less structured and less kind of directed evening. And to have folks be able to come and share their opinions about this issue on a larger scale, so that you have that information from the wider community in order to focus your discussion and your direction on specific areas of the community. And so, that's what we were thinking was going to be the case. I think one of the things that I heard earlier was a little bit of a struggle, or at least a discussion, around how to kind of kick things off and how to kind of ground people. And one of the things that we suggested to the city manager was, at the second workshop that we did, there was a kind of a looped discussion around, these are what ADUs are, these are the kind of general issues around the issue of whether allowing them or not. We could possibly queue that up and show it to folks, at least so folks have that kind of common grounding before they start addressing you with their individual comments relative to the pros and cons. comments relative to the pros and cons of having them here. We weren't envisioning it as a, a staff presentation of the four options, or a huge dissertation of what ADUs are and aren't, because we've, frankly, we've done that twice with the community. And what we heard from you, that you said that you wanted, was more of a, of an opportunity for people to talk directly to you about their opinions on the issue. And to us, we read that as it's time for the staff to kind of step back and provide the, the ability to have the technical discussion if we need it, but to have really the ability for folks to come to you and talk directly to you about their opinion about the issue before you give us direction later on in the spring and summer about where to go on them.
Perfect.
That was kind of where we thought it was going to go.
Perfect.
Okay.
So then?
Thank you. And so, and one thing that I was just thinking about a little bit earlier also is that perhaps we should invite the Planning and Zoning Commission so that they're here to listen also. So, Councilmember Olson?
I think that's fine. They've already told us what they've come up with, so I mean, we're not, are we going to give it back to them as that were suggested?
No, no.
So, I mean, I think they should come, it'd be great. I, I'm getting stuck with the fact that we have ten minutes to plan how we're going to do the evening. I think we all know we want to get feedback. It's not a public hearing. We should not be treating it as a public hearing, nor should we lead people to think it's a public hearing, but it is definitely a place to get feedback on the different options with much more of a unified voice for people to hear different voices. I, I hear people saying on both sides, you know, I really don't want this, I really do want this, and neither of the two are listening to each other and why there's concerns on either side. And I think that's the value of all being in the same room, to hear some of it, to maybe find, well, maybe there's some compromises on some of these, which is why we have four options here, I think, with some different possibilities. How do we get at that feedback without having just a, kind of anybody speak up whenever they want? I mean, which is fine too, but what's our structure is really what I think you all need. And we're going to have people in the room that have not come to anything. I know some people that are coming that are just kind of, oh, I better go to this now. And so if we're not going to have a presentation, I think we need to have materials that's really clear so we don't have to go backtrack with them if there's so many people here that already know what they are. That's going to drive them nuts. So I think we got to figure out those logistics. So.
Do you have any suggestions?
I, well, I've made some already, so I did. I, I think, I think we need to present the four different ones in a very simple, kind of straightforward way of what the four options are, what the pros and cons are of each, and then begin to open it up for citizen input on them. And if we want to do it as a panel, I mean, I don't want to be answering for them. Those of you that have done some of the group stuff, we could, we could have them. I would prefer that some people think about it before they start latching on to people. I do think that you get influenced by the person, you know, I think it's good for people to think, you know, I really don't like this, and I'm going to find my voice on this, I'm going to put it up there, rather than, well, and then they leave and they're mad. They didn't really say what they wanted to say because there's pressure of the group. So I do think some strategic kind of process is important for this. So I don't know if you have ideas on how to do that, because you've done some of these before, but...
My thoughts were that we might, maybe we'd have a sign-in sheet, just like how you have comments, public comment and council meetings, and we could call them up one by one, and then they could speak.
That's an interesting way to do it.
Okay. I also would, people raising hands and asking for the mic, I mean, if we have a mic, we could pass it around the room. Councilmember Wink?
Great ideas. I, I would like to suggest we also move forward with adding what you suggested, Brad, in terms of maybe just having, representing those, the pieces from that second meeting we had.
Well, what I was specifically talking about was John created a, essentially a power, and, and a, a narrated PowerPoint that get, that went through the issues. And one of the things that we could possibly do is when the evening's ready to be convened, we could open with that.
Yep.
And then, what I think we need to hear is whether or not we're presenting four options, or we're giving them people, people information on the four options. That would be helpful to give us specific direction tonight.
I also love the idea of having people notate their areas of interest once they sign in, or at the time of sign in. With these types of functions, some people just absolutely are mortified to speak up. Some just don't want to, maybe they're not mortified, but at least if we collect it, whether or not the individual who writes it has to speak it, but somebody at least, maybe a neutral party, sometimes people will say more if they don't have to know, you know, show everyone that it came from them. But maybe they write it, somebody else presents it, maybe our mayor, one of us, or all of us. Just another way of thinking about it. But I do love that idea of capturing their thoughts as we start. Maybe while the presentation's going on in five, ten minutes, we have time to have a look, do some work on those, you know, the issues and questions before we tackle them in the latter part of the, the meeting.
How long is the PowerPoint? Thank you.
Fifteen minutes.
That's great.
That's enough. Yeah, that's a good start.
Councilmember Barantine?
I think rather than repeat all of the suggestions again, because I would like to make sure that we have what Planning and Zoning originally put forward that started the conversation. And there has to be a fifth option. One of the frustrations was, in the previous two meetings, that people believed that if they were not for ADUs at all, that there wasn't really an option, that they didn't want them at all, anywhere. And so there has to be that opportunity for them, because they kind of felt that that was missing in that piece before. So, and I like John's suggestion about signing in and allowing people to kind of have their turn at speaking and asking some questions, and I'm sure other people in the audience have that same, same thing. And I like the mayor's suggestion about having the Planning and Zoning Board here as well. Along with what Councilmember Olson already talked about several times, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
I realize that, that option one is the one that you all presented to us, and so maybe we don't need all four up there. Obviously, one of them should be no, no ADU. So I think if we have stickers with the stuff going on, that should be one of them.
Yeah, I think the distinction was that, that the four options that would be presented to you is if you didn't choose to go forward, that'd be self-evident to the community. Maybe we do need to ask that specifically.
Well, and if people don't think we're going to consider that, then it needs to be clear. But I don't know if we want all four up there or not. I realize, you know, one was the one that we really were asked to consider to begin with, but had these others as well.
Well, I'd like to see all four.
Thank you. All four? Okay. So is it five really, then?
It's five, all five.
Five is no.
Five is no.
Yeah, number five is no. Mr. Powers, did you have something else? I noticed that when Councilmember Olson was speaking, you, I thought you wanted to respond to something.
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And I, another question that I have gotten is, a lot of the homeowners would like to know, when people speak, are they a homeowner, or are they from the development community?
I think it's fine to ask people to say who they are.
Okay. All right. And just one more piece of the logistics. We can all speak, we can all field questions, we can take turns, which is fine to me, or all be available besides staff? Or, Councilmember Olson?
I'm really unclear. Is it, are we in here for this event?
Yes.
And there'll be a stage up here, or some kind of podium? And so are we all sitting at it, or are we all out here, or what? I'm, I'm just looking for the logistics of what happens next, and what, and so that people feel at ease that they can say what they want to say that night, so.
And I think we could all be upfront, so if questions perhaps are addressed to us, I mean, I really think it's going to be more comments addressed to us rather than questions. If there are questions, they probably will be addressed to staff.
Then how could, could we gather them by having them also write them down, and then put them on one of the four and five, to say, this is some feedback on that one, I don't like this because of this, or, you know, I need it to be that, so that everybody then continues to have something specific that they get to give, and if it's no way, never, they can put one on five?
Actually, I think that's a great idea, to, to have sticky notes for feedback, even if it's just on those five. They may not be the things that come up during discussion, but then we would have a takeaway. I mean, if they wanted to put their name and what district they lived in or something, so...
If they sign up here, they'll have a name. I would hate to have them be attributed to something they don't want to be singled out by on any day.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Anything you want to see?
Try to summarize.
Yes, please do.
So show the fifteen-minute PowerPoint that we've already, the narrated PowerPoint that we've already presented. Present shortly, as succinctly as we possibly can, the four different, five different options that council is potentially considering for ADUs. And then with the signup sheet, allow for, pass the mic, everybody can ask questions or address their comments to council. And at, at some point in the evening, maybe at the beginning or whatever, we'd have something with big white sheets of paper that say option A, B, C, D, E, and allow people to write comments up on the wall.
Yeah, just logistically. I would suggest that that latter part come at the end, because you all can address folks at that point, say, if you have comments that you want to put up, you can go ahead and do that now, based on the fact that you had the evening to, again, educate themselves around it, so they'd, they'd be more informed. So I'd suggest that as kind of maybe the end part.
I actually think that's a great idea. So, okay.
Are you, are you feeling like you got enough to, I mean, it's, obviously you're the experts that are going to be leading some of this, so it's going to be less us listening, and I'm not sure they're going to ask me a specific question as they would ask one of you.
So, and I think that, I think it's all going to work out. I think we have enough information right now because it's, we need to be in the room next door. So if, if there's any other communication, if you want to email me and the city manager, or the assistant city manager.
It'll be passed along to the right place.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will meet next door. Five minutes.